For joining the meeting tonight, mostly virtual. We will, if you would like to speak in a little bit, please sign up now. That is very really helpful. I'm not able to see the chats tonight, so I'm going to have help from my other board members and our staff. So we will start with accentuate the positive. And Mr. Walker, since I love your hard hat, would you like to go first?
Chair Watson, Board Toby Walker, Principal Phoenix High School. I would love to go first. Want to give some shout outs. Janelle and first student, a lot of times those jobs, they don't hear from people. They don't hear things they usually hear when things are not going well. So I'm going to put on myself to make sure I just send her an email saying, thank you. Things are going well. I encourage everyone else do the same because like I said, usually it's only Janelle, where's bus 12? Janelle, this bus is late. Janelle, this kid got dropped at the wrong place. So really grateful for the work that she's done with her staff. On top of that, our new office or our new office, our new kitchen chef or manager, Suzie in Sedexo, the awesome work they're doing, serving kids food. We haven't done that in almost two years and it's in a brand new space, brand new facility. It's operating just smooth. Kids are getting through their smiles on the faces. So really grateful for the work they're doing. Our teachers, support staff and students, the transition back from what we did last year and the year before, that thing they called hybrid and all sorts of CDL, all those acronyms that OD came out with. We transitioned back to normal school as it is this year. And the work that our student staff have done over nine weeks. It's the end of the first quarter, so it's an exciting time, but we're really grateful for the work that our kids and staff have done. I am wearing a hard hat and a yellow vest. This will be the last time I wear it. Phase three million, one hundred and fifty eight thousand. I don't know what it was on this remodel, construction rebuild. We get to kind of move into the remodel space tomorrow, which is the band room, choir room, those flex spaces, the theater room, the theater. Yes, that's a huge celebration. So I want to thank John for the coordination he's done. We've got a fire watch in place because the parts aren't here yet, but just done a lot of work to get Mike to roast in there. Speaking of Mike to roast, actually we take that off, get rid of that stuff. Speaking of Mike to roast, want to thank him for his patience. He's been the last staff member at Phoenix High School to move into his space. So he's been in the restroom, teaching band and guitar. So thanks to Mike, thanks to John, and we're just really excited for tomorrow when we can start to occupy that space. And I'm glad I'm done with the hard hats. That's it from the ship.
Thank you. Can you call on somebody next, please, since I can't see tonight?
Oh, I would love to. Mr. Valier.
Somehow I knew it. We always kind of go in order for some reason. Elementary is up, high school down. Good evening, everyone. Chair Watson and members of the board, Kent Valier, Principal at Talent Middle School. Lisa and I always want to find some data to share with you. So today's data number is sixty five and those hard data points, that first number of sixty five represents some student successes. As you may recall, we started a reset room for Talent Middle School students this year. It's a quiet, calm space for kids who need to soothe the effects of some trauma. So far this year, sixty five students have spent time in the reset room. And that's sixty five fewer classroom disruptions and sixty five more compassionate interventions for our kids. I'd like to thank Jackie Weber and Lisa Roman, Derek Rodman and Jordan Ruiz for making this a reality. It's an important part of our school. Another data point that is at sixty five is that we just wrapped up our fall sports season and sixty five kids took part in volleyball and football and they really practiced life skills, punctuality, perseverance, dedication, humility, problem solving and teamwork. And really our sports are an extension of our classroom and great coaches are great teachers. So I want to thank Sandra Tringalo, Brianna Polk, Olivia Watson, Amber Jacobson, Heather Armstrong, Chris Ann Hawes helps a lot with events, Dave Johnson, our athletic director, Tony Bench, Ronnie Thompson and Ted Bennett for doing all the great coaching during our fall sports season. Thank you very much and let's hear from Heather Lowe.
Thanks, Kent. Good evening. I'm Madam Chair Watson and Board Heather Lowe over at Talent Elementary. First off, I want to share that we had our trunk or treat event. You know, it was our first ever and Kurt will probably talk about his too. Finding our creative way to get families on campus safely and celebrate the traditional Halloween. And it went off so wonderfully. It was a huge success at Talent. We had about probably over a hundred families come to campus and our back parking lot was packed. We have people on the street, people lining, you know, the edge of the parking lot just and so much fun. And you know, walking through the line, the parents were just especially grateful to be able to come and celebrate with us for the first time in so, so long. Also wanted to share that today was our annual Pink and Denim Day at TES, where we raise funds and awareness for local women who are battling cancer. So a big shout out to our staff wellness team, which was led by Kristen Zarin and Carrie Donham, who've been organizing this for years. So today we had zumba, we had art, we had yoga and treats after school. And so far this year, we've raised seven hundred and fifty dollars to donate, which is great. And if anybody else wants to kick some in and make it a thousand, that would be awesome. It would be a record breaking year, or it is already, but just such a great cause. And you know, our staff really rally around this event because there's been so many of us who have been touched in our lives by cancer. So really thanks to Carrie and Kristen and the team for organizing that. I also wanted to just send a general shout out to our teachers. They're getting ready to do progress reports for the first time for a quarter system. They've never done that at the elementary and so they've gotten really organized and ready to get those all prepared for conferences. And then lastly, I did also want to send a public shout out to Janelle as well. Toby said it, you know, they have to deal with a lot of griping, but she is truly just amazing and flexible and just really a gift to us all. So thank you to Janelle and her team. And I'll kick it to Shawna up the road.
Thanks, Heather. Good evening, Chair Watson. Good evening, Board. It's good to see you all. I'm Shawna Schleif, Principal at Phoenix Elementary School. And I have to talk about parades, progress reports and perseverance here on the pirate ship. That's a lot of alliteration there. We revived our annual pirate parade for Halloween and it was just really amazing. I'm pretty sure 100% of the staff participated by dressing up, but the large majority of the students dressed up. And it was just a really sweet, fun way to kind of get together, you know, blast music, say hello to the friends that came in the parking lot to join us and then just celebrate one another. Also want to say how grateful we are for tomorrow because like Heather was saying, this is our first time doing progress reports. And so having the time tomorrow to just take pause and get a bunch of work done. Our teachers have been working super hard. Our whole staff has been working really hard. So I'm really excited to have the time tomorrow to really dive in and be conscientious about the information we get to share with our families. And we're super excited about in-person conferences coming up. And then lastly, with perseverance, I want to give a shout out to our sped team with Carrie Brooks, Tatiana, Yvonne, Renee. They have been doing an amazing job. And if you know anything about special education, you know that it just comes with a lot of meetings and a lot of paperwork and a lot of connecting and a lot of serving. And they have just been doing a phenomenal job of really supporting our students and supporting our families as well. And we just have a really top notch crew. So I just wanted to give them a big shout out today. So that's it from the pirate ship. Kurt, take it away, buddy.
Thank you, Shawna. Good evening, Board. Chair Person Watson. It's great to see you guys again tonight via screen. I did enjoy the last one though at person. So I know that's coming up again. We get to do that. So I want to start out, Board, with just a thank you to you for the card and the very kind thoughts and words that you sent my way last, last month in appreciation of principal month, I think. So anyway, very kind, appreciate it. And so thank you very much. It's great to work with you guys. It's always been a great working relationship and it makes our jobs much easier when we have such supportive school board members. So thank you very much. I really appreciate that and I'm sure the rest would like to pass those thoughts on. Want to give a shout out to Jamie Cross. She's the first grade teacher, but she's also the union rep here at Orchard Hill. And she's, we haven't had a whole lot of things to work about, to work on, but whenever we have, it's just been really cordial and an honest, open communication process with her. And so I just want to give a shout out to her. It's been really a nice working relationship with her. And then along those lines of the union, I want to give a shout out to PTA, PTA. They are providing lunch for our staff tomorrow during our in-service time. And it's just always such a joy to, to get everybody together and for them to kind of host this. It's a very kind gesture of them and I want to just say thank you to them. Next up, just yeah, same kind of response that Heather talked about as far as our trunk or treat. Our Orchard Hill PTA hosted our first annual trunk or treat here at Orchard Hill. And it was just a phenomenal event. It felt so good to have community back on campus, kids, parents smiling, enjoying themselves, having a great time. And all the staff that provided their trunks for the activity and the event. And PTA handed out some Disneyland ticket packages. So we're a big hit and some great families captured those and earned those or won those, I should say. So that was, that was a sweet evening, a very sweet evening. And I'm looking forward to getting to do more of that with the community over here at Orchard Hill this year. And on a final note, we're, we're preparing and very much looking forward to in-person conferences coming up later this month. But both Shawna and Heather kind of mentioned a little bit about the work we're doing along those lines and excited to be able to share what progress and growth we've made already this year, which it's been a lot. Our staff's working really hard, the kids are working hard and it's a great beginning of the year, considering all that we're dealing with. So with that, Board, thank you very much. I'd like to pass it on to Aaron Santi.
Thanks, Kurt. So good evening, Board. It was, I want to echo Kurt's statement. It was great to be in person with you guys last week there, or two weeks ago there at the high school. Looking forward to that again at some point soon. Just really quickly, because my colleagues are so verbose, I'm trying to wrap it up. I do want to note that our ODP PAC is going to be meeting, our parent advisory committee, they'll be meeting next Tuesday. For those of you guys that are newer to the board, that's one of the integral parts of our outdoor discovery program is our parent advisory committee. They're returning closer to normal now, starting to talk about fundraising activities and opportunities to get into the classroom and help support kids there. Also just to tack on to the, to the costume talk, our ODP kids did participate and they of course brought some great creative costumes. So I was pleased to see that. And on the Phoenix Talent Rising Academy side, we had a virtual costume party last Friday. So we got to see a lot of great kid costumes on the Zoom as well. So that was great. And then the final note from PTRA is, as you guys know, we're going to be starting quarter two. That means new electives for our middle schoolers at PTRA. And they've got an option between six different languages that they can select. Intro to Fashion, Forensic Science, Coding, Marine Biology, Veterinary Medicine and four or five others. So great opportunities for kids in that program through the electives that we're offering. So excited about that. And that's it for, I think, our administrative team. So Chair Watson, I'll kick it back to you unless you have anybody else you want to recognize for positives.
Thank you. Amy, I think is on.
I am on. Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Watson and Board Members. Just a little update from food service. I'd just like to really thank John McCup and Alan from IT for some of our new food service equipment. With the help of Debbie and those two, we've worked towards getting some wifi, point of sale system that's going to also be touchless for the kids. So we can start ringing up kids and bring back seconds and all the card options. We did about twenty five thousand meals in October. It's about 50% of the total district population that we're feeding every day. And we just want to keep on feeding more and more and remind everyone that all meals of the meal, excuse me, all meals are free for all students every day. We are also finally excited to be back in our kitchen there at Phoenix Elementary and looking forward to starting our FFVP, which is our fresh fruits and vegetable snack program. So we're actually just sitting here working on the menu here tonight for that, so we can get it going. Thank you.
Board, I think we lost the sound to you guys. Can you give a thumbs up if you can hear? Okay, good.
I don't think this side is working.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you. Thank you guys for your patience and letting us know. I would like to do an accentuate the positive. Most of the board went to the Gateway Project opening ribbon cutting and it was amazing. Nancy did a great job on translating. It was two hours of translating and I was impressed. And you represented the district grade and you were just amazing. So I wanted to give you a kudos on that. Another thing about it is so many people work together in the community to bring home fifty three families. And it was just incredible to see what a thoughtful, hardworking community can do when they put their mind to it. So, and I'm glad for our, I know our district helped out and thank you very much to the admin who have spent time on that. So I wanted just to put that in.
I want to make sure this isn't going to feedback or something, but I'm glad you reminded everyone about the Gateway Project ribbon cutting because I wanted to give, I sent her a note, an email and you were copied on that, Dawn, and Brent was copied. But I just wanted to give a shout out to Tracy Koah, who spoke and represented the district at the ribbon cutting and just did a phenomenal job of talking about the work going on throughout the pandemic, but also the fire in support of families and kids. And it's just tremendous stuff and she just did a marvelous job telling that story and, and added a personal touch to that was very moving about her situation. And so great job and thank you for that.
Anybody else before I move on? Okay, student representatives, I'm so glad that you are joining us tonight and I'm so excited to have you guys back. Do you want to volunteer to go first? You may call on you. Ruby, I will, I'm picking you today. Can you go first, please?
Um, so I'm going to be talking about mostly about our leadership class at the high school. We just finished our SOC drive this Monday and we had some good participation once students figured out they could get spirit points from it. So that was good. And then we start our food drive next week and it goes for two weeks. We're going to be donating that food. And then our coat drive starts November 29th and we're also going to be donating those. We're hoping that we'll get lots of participation since it's the holiday season. So that's why we're doing a lot of charities. And our sparrow Ricky, we just got that. And the forms are with teachers and the office. And we have to, I think about 250 hours and they donate the money to Ricky. So.
Thank you very much. Yes, please.
Hi. I'm super excited. Sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to talk about the band will be going on a band competition this coming weekend, which will be our first coming band competition since 2019. So that's really exciting. I am extremely excited for this band competition. We've been working on it since August, I think, our show Jazz and More Jazz. And especially with not having a band room, that's been, that's been pretty tough. Working in the wrestling room, I'm really surprised that our band students were able to hold up, you know? So I'm really proud of the people in band and marching band who were patient with getting this new band room. And I believe we'll be moving in to the new, the new band room on this next Monday, I think, which is also really exciting. Everybody is super excited. We're going to have a, like, kind of like an open house where we're going to play our show in front of a bunch of people. And then we're going to do a tour of the new band room. There's going to be food and stuff like that is going to be fun. So I'm really excited about that. And another thing I wanted to talk about was the things we've been working on in Link Crew. The week of Halloween, I believe, we were working on a trunk or treat. And it was kind, it was an event where freshmen came with their Link Crew leaders and they decorated a table together, kind of like a trunk or treat, you know? And not a lot of freshmen showed up. So it kind of got to the point where everybody was just joining a random group that they wanted to join. And we decorated our tables and once we were finished decorating, a bunch of kids around the neighborhood came by and participated in the trunk or treat. And it was really, it was really cool to interact with the kids. It gave me a lot of feely goody feelings. So that, that was really, that was really cool and really fun. And another thing that we actually just did a few days ago was cocoa and crammed for freshmen to get caught up on any sort of schoolwork they may have and stuff like that, you know? And it was really cool. We had a lot of, whoa. We had a lot of, of the Link Crew leaders participating in that as well, trying to encourage the freshmen to work on stuff. We had Link Crew leaders helping freshmen on schoolwork and that was really cool. It was really cool. And we also had hot chocolate as well. So that was, that was really fun, drinking hot chocolate, doing schoolwork with the freshmen. That was, that was an awesome feeling. And we also have a trivia, like, kind of like a trivia game coming up soon for the freshmen as well. It's going to be like our Thanksgiving themed kind of Link Crew event, except it'll be trivia. And for this one, the freshmen are going to be able to pair up with any sort of group they want and they're going to have fun and play some trivia games. And I'm really looking forward to that as well. So yeah, that's pretty much it on the Link Crews part. But we also, it's also really cool. The other day, Link Crew and Leadership were working together to put up posters for our new sparrow, which was really, which was really cool. We had Ms. Robin helping us with the borderline for our posters. It was, it was really nice to interact with some of the leadership students as well. So yeah, that's all that's been going on, on my part lately.
You have been busy. Can you state your name so the audience can hear?
Yes, Sedalia Gorman.
Thank you. And I have a question for you. Sometimes I will have one and I don't know if anyone else does. Do you know when the band open house is?
That's what we're trying to figure out. We're trying to figure out a specific date because some band kids have a busy schedule with work and stuff like that. So we're, we're kind of still trying to deliberate on when we're going to do that. But yeah, really looking forward to it.
And I look forward to hearing what you think about the band room next time you come back. So be prepared to answer that question.
And make sure we're invited to your open house.
Yes.
And if you didn't know, Sarah loves the band, so. Joseph?
Okay, I just have a couple of things. I am involved in one of the clubs called, it's the State of Jefferson Scavenger Hunt. And that just started this week on Monday. And so it'll go on till sometime next week. And I've been doing that for a few years, so I find that fun. And we had a good amount of people show up to it and so far we've had good participation in that. Another thing with the end of the quarter being like now, lots of students have been trying to get either grades up or like get things turned in. And the teachers have been really helpful in cooperating with students and making sure that everyone has the opportunity to get things turned in. And they've been really flexible with like things going on. And so just all the teachers have been really helpful. And yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. We will move on to citizens comments. I'm getting it up right now. I wanted to remind everybody too that the, on our district website, we have FAQ under the Board, the school board tab on the district site. And many of the questions that come up during public meeting are, and the answers are listed on that website. So if you have some questions, it might be there, so you can check there as well. As a reminder, this meetings of the board of directors are meetings in the public versus public meetings. Any comments from those joining us virtually will come under public meeting law. Please know the comments will be heard during citizen comment time on the agenda only. It must be limited to three minutes with a 30 minute total for all comments. Please do not expect the board to respond to comments at this time. The board cannot hear in-public complaints directed toward an employee. Those complaints should be presented to the employee's immediate supervisor in person or in writing. If you wish to provide public comment, please utilize the raise your hand feature or the chat feature. All oral comments and, all oral comments and chat comments are electronically recorded. When I call your name, please unmute yourself, have your camera turned on and speak clearly. For the record, please state your name and the organization you represent, if any. If you've submitted written comments, please summarize instead of reading word for word. Please be respectful and limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, you may also submit written comments by completing the public comment form, which is located on our website under Board. The school board tab, written comments should be submitted no later than 5:00 PM on the day before the meeting. Comments received will be shared with the board. And that is it. Any comments in the chat? What? Yeah, I was on, but now I gotta get it back. Okay, not seeing any hand raising either. Okay, so public comment is closed now to superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to follow up on the FAQ as well. Not only do we, are there questions? Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I just want to follow up on the FAQ as well. Not only do we, are there questions answered from, uh, citizens comments, but if there's any new state information out, we also do an FAQ on that. So, um, our citizens and students can go to that page for any information. They can certainly reach out as well. Want to give you a little bit of an update on, uh, our SRO and talent. Uh, talked to, uh, Chief Snook there. As you, as you may know that they have received services during the day from the city of Ashland to patrol. Um, the city of Ashland is running into some workforce issues, which trickles down to the city of Talent. And so I don't want to say it was a good run of SRH at Talent, uh, middle school because it's just, uh, potentially on pause. We might not have them is, uh, Officer Layman as much as we had anticipated this year. Uh, when he is on, if he has to do patrol, uh, during the day, he will, uh, be in Talent Middle School and housed from there and patrolling. Uh, but have his home base at the middle school. So, uh, that'll start next month, but I just wanted you aware of that, that we're going to lose some services at, uh, the SRO. They do have two people, uh, that they're in the hiring process, but the academy is so backed up that it probably will be six months to a year for that to happen. So still hopeful, still a lot of support there for that program. In your blue folders, uh, athletic director Dave Earhart, uh, you'll notice a letter to, uh, Brad Garrett, who is with the OSAA. They are currently reclassifying, uh, doing the classifications for the next four years for OSAA. Uh, we, uh, sent information up to, um, uh, request a certain classification. They took a, uh, snapshot of a number of students from our high school the beginning of last year. We don't think that reflects what our, um, current numbers are. And as you know, uh, our participation is down for a variety of reasons. We have a lot of our students that live outside the district, some many miles away that limits their participation in after school events. Uh, many of our fam, uh, kids are working, uh, to help provide for the family until permanent housing can come available. And so we sent information to OSAA to, uh, request being in a league that we have a competitive balance, um, and are more, uh, suited to, uh, similar size, uh, as well. So if you have any questions on that, I just wanted the board to be aware. And they'll make that decision here probably in December and we will, uh, see where we, um, see where we fall. But we want to give our kids the best, uh, chance to compete and, um, uh, have success as well. So, and really where we should be. So. Go ahead. It's a good time.
Um, I was just going to ask, um, if that would, it's probably a way too early question, but if this, um, if we were given the favor to move to a different classification, would it, um, would travel, would we have less or more travel than we have now?
Yeah, that's a good question. Many people request different leagues due to travel. It would either league that we would fall into what they're considering now or what we're requesting to be in is, is, is fairly similar travel. Um, there's enough, there's enough local teams in each league. So, yeah, it's a good question. Um, next, thank you for bringing up the gateway. I've really, um, it's unfortunate that I missed that. We were out of town and, uh, know that we had great representation. Thank you for mentioning Tracy Koah. She's an excellent representative and in a great spot to be our student and family engagement specialist. Um, not only just with her experience, but just, uh, uh, the way she works with students and families and just so, so happy to have her in that position. Um, she is the go-to when we're looking for families and, and connecting with families to move into Gateway. One of the things that we're, uh, finding out is some of the emergency housing, um, sites that are true emergency. You'll hear about hotels, you'll hear about county parks, things of that nature. There's also many other benefits and stipends for meals that come along with that. Um, and so when we're approaching our families to say, hey, this is a great spot, there, that's, uh, something that they're weighing on because it's a huge benefit to their family at this time. We're working with the state to hopefully transfer those benefits to the Gateway project, but that's, um, that's something that we're continuing to work through and work towards. Uh, there will be some opportunity for rental assistance and things of that nature at the gateway. So we're confident we can get over that barrier, but that's something that we're just kind of finding out that, you know, our families do not want to lose that opportunity to move into transitional, uh, housing. Uh, I also think there needs to be a little bit of education on what is emergency housing and how long that'll last and what is truly transitional housing that moves into permanent housing. So, um, we're, we're getting a crash course into that, but I think when somebody asks us years down the road what the differences are, we'll know. Finally, as you, uh, have read and it's in the news and, uh, you heard some things locally about, uh, vaccines being available for ages five through 12. Uh, now we will, um, look at how that, how we can support that in, in our schools. We are so fortunate that we have a partnership with La Clinica. And so if a family chooses to have their child vaccinated, we have school-based health centers to be able to do that. We'll treat it as we do and make sure we get parent permission, just like the other vaccines that we've done for years and years and years. So, uh, more on that. I just wanted to kind of tell you what our process is. Um, I think the anxiety starts creeping up when it says it's the state of Oregon going to mandate vaccines for students, uh, to be in school. As you heard from Jim Green last week at OSBA, for those that attended, um, uh, OSBA is really, uh, advocating for any mandatory vaccination for schooling. Follow the same exact process that it always has, um, which takes time, which takes, uh, public input. And, um, I think, uh, uh, from what I'm hearing, I think that will be the case, but I know when all of a sudden you have vaccines available for, for kids ages five through 12, that that, uh, creates some anxiety and what that means for, um, our own kids on vaccination status to be able to attend school. So, um, just wanted to bring that to your attention and that is all I have.
Thank you very much. Yes.
I just had a question, Brent, going back to the SROs. Are there, are there budgetary implications to that arrangement or is it just sort of a, a general? You know?
It, it's been.
Not hours based.
Good question. It, it's pretty much pay as the, as, uh, uh, pay as we go. And so if they're, if he's serving the middle school and he's at the middle school, they'll document that time. Um, Ernie had to do this as well, uh, during the spring last year sometimes. And so when, if they need to go on a call or they need to be on patrol, they'll, they'll clock out of that time and then it's pretty clear when they bill us. So, um, essentially what we budgeted, we probably won't spend this year and it, we can, uh, roll that over. So. Good question though.
I have a question about the same thing, but the same question. Um, if, if we need more support, is it an option to go to another? I mean, I think every police department is probably short staffed anyways, but is there an option to go with the county or a state reserve or something like that? That would be an option to help out for a while or are we not there yet?
Yeah, I think we can. And even the two people that are in the hiring process, we, I asked if, uh, they get qualified for a CSO, uh, which is a community service officer, if they could be housed at the middle school and Chief Snook was, uh, um, you know, into that possibility, just see if that would be. So we'd have a presence there. Uh, but I think if we continue to see that we're not having the service, maybe we reach out to other entities.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brent? Okay. Moving on to the program report for the Boys and Girls Club.
I'll just, uh, introduce, um, Greg Rowe. He's been chomping at the bit to get in front of you, the school board. He is a heck of a partner, um, of the Phoenix Talent Schools and Boys and Girls Club has been a staple and talent for, for many, many years. And, uh, they have, they have served our families so well and really stepped up in, um, fire relief. And, uh, uh, Greg, I'll just kick it over to you.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be, can you hear me? Yep. Okay. Yeah, I'll just be very brief. And first of all, I want to say thank you to the Phoenix Town School Board for allowing us to give an update tonight. Uh, um, you know, uh, some people know what we do. A lot of people don't know what we do, but, uh, we've been partners with the district for well over 20 years. And I've had thousands of kids go through our program. Uh, but I also want to say, you know, not only thank you to you, but also what a pleasure it is to work with Superintendent Barry, Principal Heather Lowe and, you know, you know, our, our former principals and, and Sante and Shake, they just, and the, just the whole district is wonderful to work with, including the teachers and the support staff. Um, really, we work with three school districts and this school district is special. Um, every single employee is amazing. Uh, as a side note, as president of the SOU Alumni Association, I'm very proud of Mr. Barry for his, uh, Superintendent of the Year. Um, we're extremely proud of that accomplishment. But I'll just go ahead and go on with a quick, uh, update. Um, we are, like you mentioned, we're almost at the end of our, uh, our fire relief efforts with the district. Over the last year, we have distributed almost a hundred and 20,000 dollars to children, families and staff within this school district who suffered, uh, losses as a result of the fire. Um, primarily with the help of Principal Lowe and Office Manager Cheryl Joseph, who is amazing. Um, we really worked with them, uh, to identify, uh, families in the district, uh, that needed help. Uh, we provided families with everything from cars to furniture, clothing, kitchenware. Uh, I myself delivered couches and, and beds to, uh, uh, families, uh, who moved into new apartments after they lost their stuff. We also, uh, gave families first and last month's rent, deposits, um, paid for hotel rooms for some of our families over there. Uh, that were from the, uh, you know, uh, you, you know, our families who are Boys and Girls Club members. And again, we had a, a lot of help with Cheryl and, 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 uh, and the principal identifying those families that needed it. We also gave thousands of dollars of gift cards to families at stores, whether it was Arco gas cards or Wimco cards or Walmart. Um, but I think what we're really most proud of, I guess, over the last year is that we, you know, we also provided free distance learning support to students last year. Um, Cheryl and Heather helped us choose children that needed us, uh, the most after that fire, right after the fire for online distance learning support. Um, and, uh, we picked about 40 students that needed that help. Um, needless to say, we had our hands full. Our, our staff are not teachers and, and, but you know, they helped guide the, guide, uh, guide the children through the online distance learning. And, um, and these are kids that, as, as you well know, they, they, you know, not only faced online learning challenges, but many of our Boys and Girls Club kids were also traumatized by the fire. Um, and many of them had, you know, didn't even have their home when we first started that program. So I'm proud to say that all of our kids passed at grade level. Um, I'm very proud of my staff on that and, and every, uh, you know, I know other people paid, uh, charged for that service. We didn't charge a penny. Um, we're back to after school programming, programming now, which is what we'd love to do. Um, and we were glad to help, but we're, we're glad online learning is over definitely. And we're getting closer to capacity, getting back to full capacity like we were before. Families still don't pay a dime for our programming for after school care. I mean, before they only paid 30 bucks a month or, you know, 10, uh, $50 a week for summer programming all day. But, uh, you know, we just felt it was important for us to provide that free programming. Um, I'd like to, you know, uh, also let you know that those donations, which I was totally surprised by, was primarily, you know, gathered by my board of directors and a few Boys and Girls Club donors, mostly here in Grants Pass at our main club, who stepped up and wanted to make sure our club and talent and those families and, uh, uh, parents and even staff, even help staff at, at some of the schools got the support they needed. And, you know, so no one has paid a dime since the start of that fire. Um, this all can be verified by our auditor and, and so, uh, we're very, very proud of that service. Also, I want, you know, some of the board members may not know, we're not a babysitting service. We're a, we're a nationally recognized education program. After school kids now are doing homework help, STEAM programming. We're the only club in Oregon with a full-time STEAM coordinator. Um, we do arts, we do socio, socio and emotional wellness programming. Of course, physical activity to get the kids wiggles out and, and field trips and stuff like that. So I had a couple of minutes, I was told, and just wanted to kind of give you a very brief update of what we're doing at the club, but really whether it's our principals that have helped us over the years, you know, make this, this programming happen, they really are the key to that and providing us that space at the elementary school has been key. We're hoping to build a club here before too awful long. Um, I think the kids in Talent, Fe- Phoenix Talent deserve a club of their own. Um, and then we can get out of Principal Heather's hair and, but I'll tell you, her Cheryl and it are, I love the, those two women are amazing and, um, all the principals have been amazing to work with, but those are the ones we usually work with directly. And they're the ones that helped us pick out the kids that really, really needed us, needed us, needed us the most. Um, and so, uh, we just want to thank you guys for all your support. Answer any questions?
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, uh, Greg, um, but I just wanted to thank you, you know, um, it's always true that it takes a village to raise a child, but it's especially true nowadays, um, with the pandemic and then especially for our district with the fire. So we're just incredibly, um, you know, I appreciate that you said you're grateful. We're, we're grateful for your partnership and your support, um, in support of our children and families. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, Greg, thank you. Um, and I think I saw Jessica King pop in and she oversees that after school program as well. So a, a great partner. And I know she worked closely with Heather and Cheryl. So, um, thanks, Greg. And I, you had more than a couple of minutes, I told you.
I didn't want to drag it on too long. I wasn't sure. So I'm a quick talker anyway.
Thank you so much for filling us in that program report. We really appreciate it and appreciate, appreciate all you and your staff and your board has done for our district.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda, which consists of approval of tonight's agenda, approval of minutes on 10/21/21 and the personnel report that's in our blue folders. I would like a motion.
She's giving me the, the, the motion stare. I move approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Rick. Any discussion? There are none. The consent agenda passes. Going to action items, Coal Mine Road and the letter of intent.
Yeah, Madam Chair Watson, this is, um, exciting news. Again, as you know, we had an offer, uh, that, uh, worked its way through the process that fell through. Um, not too long after that offer, we talked about this, uh, last time that Allied Homes and Development, uh, have really been on this property, uh, since week one. Denise has, uh, worked with their organization. It paused a while when that, uh, we were in contract with that other company and they reached out and set a meeting with, with us and, uh, um, we have a letter of intent to consider, which is, uh, very favorable for the board and the district. It's a more aggressive timeline, uh, which speeds up the process. Um, and we feel and, uh, our counsel Thad Palk, who has been working with them, has reviewed this. Feel like this is a, um, good situation for the board to get into and, and, uh, look at this letter of intent.
Thank you very much for that update. Any questions? Um, motion?
Um, move approval of the, uh, letter of intent presented from Allied Homes and Development for the purchase, um, of the Coal Mine Road property.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion before we take it to a vote?
Can I just clarify that this is a letter of intent? These, this will, um, if this is approved, we will move to the next process, which actually goes into a more formalized contract of terms, um, which is a little more in depth.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Any other comments or clarifications before I take it to a vote? There are none. Rebecca?
Yes.
Nancy?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I vote yes. We get to go the next steps. Exciting. Sarah is our cheerleader tonight.
Still not enough for a pool, Sarah.
Next up is the OSBA LPC representative vote. Next up is the OSBA LPC representative vote. As you know, Sarah has put her name in the hat to be the representative for Southern Oregon. She has one other person that is running in Rogue River, right? Oh, Prospect. Well, I was wrong. I apologize. Um, but we as a board can make one vote as a single board for who we choose. Um, I'm guessing we would like to nominate Sarah, but yes, Michael, you have a question?
I'm just wondering if we have suggested motion language for this or?
I do not see it.
Okay.
But it would be something of the board.
Yeah, well Denise was supposed to be in Mexico, so.
And Denise just came back and it was a quick thing.
Yeah, no problem.
That we can make a great motion.
Yeah, I would suggest a motion that casts a vote for whoever you choose to cast a vote for.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Somebody, you want to make a motion?
I've been making all the motions.
Yeah, I don't mind doing it, but before I do, uh, who's the other party from Prospect? Who's the other?
You know, I had a.
His name is Ray Williams. Ray Williams.
Okay, thank you.
Ray Williams from Prospect is, and um, on the OSBA website, under um, the LPC explanation of duties and candidates, there's both of our applications and resumes and little statements about um, ourselves. Self-promoting for, to serve in this role. And um, I'll say that after sitting on the, or not sitting on, but participating in the region um, meeting last week, that um, our region is very diverse in, and so I think in these upcoming days, this, this is going to be um, interesting and challenging times to have some really good conversations.
I agree. Thank you, Sarah.
Madam Chairman, uh, I would like to move that uh, our board cast its vote for Sarah Crawford for that position. And uh, that good?
I'll second.
Thank you, Rick. Thank you, Rebecca. Any discussion before I take it to a vote? Hearing none. We'll start with Rick. Rick?
Yes, Sarah.
Polly?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Sarah?
I'll abstain.
Okay, Nancy?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so please send our vote in to OSBA and I hope, fingers crossed, that you will be a great representative.
Thank you. I really appreciate your support.
We are scheduled for recess. We can decide to take one. If we choose not to, student reps, you can go home. Before I let you go home though, if you have any questions for us now, if you feel like speaking up or later, please let us know and we um, will be more to help. You guys did amazing for your first night, so thank you very, very much. So.
Could we take seven minutes?
We can take seven minutes. Not eight.
Seven?
Yes, it's six.
Seven.
Can you hear me? I think you probably couldn't hear me. Thank you. We, we're up on facilities and bond updates. John, would you like to update us, please?
Uh, good evening, Madam Chair and the Board. It's good to be in front of you again today. Can you hear me okay? Okay, um, so as has been mentioned several times.
Yeah, Nancy.
Hang tight, John. We're uh. Try it now, John.
Can you hear me now?
He said things are going well. The band room is going to open soon.
How about now?
John, you want me to take your uh?
I'm talking. Can, can you hear me? How about now?
Okay, we just lost connection for some reason. Try one more time, John. If it doesn't um, work, I'll do my best to do the facility report.
Okay, how about now? Can you hear me? Hello?
Is it, is there a mute button?
One more second.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Oh yeah, how's your daughter's artwork? We can see that behind you. It's looking good. Yeah, she's doing a great job.
Okay. Can you guys hear me now?
Okay, try it that way. Polly, you're so smart. We think we got a workaround, guys.
Okay.
Hold on. Thank you.
Tiffany is going to assist us. One more second and we will be ready.
Blink twice for yes. No, just kidding.
Oh, I think we're all so ready for in-person meetings.
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Oh.
Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and the Board. So as you've heard numerous times tonight, we will be moving the band into the new space starting tomorrow. The first classes in the renovation will start on Monday. Uh, the fire devices still haven't come uh, due to supply shortages. Um, so we are instituting a fire watch, um, twenty-four hours, seven days a week, uh, to be able to use the renovated space. Um, we're utilizing uh, our staff, uh, Service Express and Action Security to cover those shifts. And I will be the coordinator coordinating the watch. Um, PES cafeteria seismic upgrade is complete and we're just working on the warranty paperwork and ONMs. And from what I hear, uh, they really enjoy the new space. The new maintenance facility should be complete in late November to early December and we're looking forward to uh, moving the facilities department into that new building. Uh, I look forward, I think it will serve the district well. We are working on a renovation plan for the DO. The building is twenty years old. Uh, the workspace design is not very functional or ergonomical. Uh, we plan to pay for this primarily with excise tax and ESR funds. And that is my report. If you have any questions, let me know.
I just might add, um, that I appreciate John's leadership on getting the fire watch so we can have band move in. Those uh, devices should have been or were expected to ship in June with uh, supply challenges. It, it's, it's just been delayed. We did hear this week that they anticipate that they will uh, ship November fifteenth, which that's the first we've heard of anything in months. So um, that's, that's hopeful and um, for supply uh, challenges, for this to be the only thing that has really hold us, holding us up, um, we can work through it in different fashion and really appreciate the fire marshal working through us and the, all the other parties that are going to help do that tw- twenty-four hour watch. So um, thanks, John, for taking time to get that organized.
Thank you.
Now, are they on a cargo container in the Port of Los Angeles? Can we go, can we go down there with a speedboat maybe and? Yeah. If we know the right bin, maybe we could get it open.
To be perfectly honest, Michael, that is.
There is hope, I think, with things uh, moving. This was, I would love to see where these things have been in city for a while, but.
No kidding.
I just, I'm glad they're maybe on their way November fifteenth.
Yeah, it'll be good.
Oh, I hope so.
Is, how, just curious, because that's gotta be very expensive to do that. So how, how do we?
It's, it's about, um, that's a good question. Uh, it's about twenty-eight thousand dollars a month. So when we heard that it was um, potentially shipping uh, the fifteenth, which will be next day air and Adroit will have that turned around in less than a week. Um, that was music to our ears. So we're hoping it'll be less than a month and it'll come out at contingency funding. Um, because it's, it's unforeseen.
Bond contingency.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, so. And uh, we will have, I might add, we just had uh, a, a financial um, update late this afternoon from Chris and he's very excited uh, where we stand uh, with bond. So we hopefully should have that at our next official board meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Any other questions for John? Thank you very much, John. We appreciate it. Uh, financial update?
Yeah, the financial update is in your blue folders. Again, we uh, with our carryover from um, last year, we sit in great position to um, get us through this year, even if there is not ADM security. Um, but we are very hopeful that that'll happen in February. Jasmine and her team has just been finishing up uh, with the audit. They, uh, the auditors had to miss a day because of a, a previously scheduled uh, retreat that they had um, planned and finally actually did that, were able to do that in person. So they will be back next Wednesday uh, to finish up the audit. So we can give those volunteers a date and a time to uh, review that audit and then share that with the board.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the legislation and OSBA update. Since I always talk to someone, wanted to do a recap on the regional on the regional meeting we had last week.
Maybe the future LPC coordinator could give us.
Polly, you haven't said much tonight. Um, so again, it was really interesting, fun to see the different board chairs and representatives from the region and really hear Jim Green talk about challenges and really hear and listen to the group of challenges. And then it was great to hear some different challenges that we always haven't to hear some of the challenges in our district as well and how we're addressing those or how we could use additional support for just meeting the needs of the students and families in our district. And one of the things, like I said earlier, that really came out from listening to the group share was there really is a wide diversity in our region on and just really continuing to advocate for local control as much as possible in the upcoming policies and decisions that are made by the state legislature. So and OSBA is advocating for that really strongly for for us as well. So.
Thank you. Anybody else want to add about the regional meeting? Okay, I will add a little bit. In the regional meeting, Jim talked about, and I have to get the words out because they were, the committee called Innovation School Law Advisory Committee. And they are the ones that when vaccines come up to schools and he had mentioned that Richard Donovan is on that committee and that they are at OSBA is advocating that if a vaccine goes through, that it goes through this committee and it goes through, like Brent had mentioned before. He Jim had mentioned before that the meeting was coming up. So I asked Richard Donovan about it and he said it was next week. I have the date. I had the date, but now I don't see it. Okay, November 17. Thank you, Sarah. And he said, this is the first there's no vote for this meeting. There's no consideration for the mandate. They're just going to continue to talk about equity criteria when there's a vaccine adoption and they're going to review by the way of work groups. So it's going to be a brief meeting. He said there's no hot topics. There's there's really no vote. He doesn't expect it to be very exciting. But that sometimes changes in COVID world. It might really be exciting. And that is November 17 via Zoom. Thanks, Sarah, from 10 to 11:30. And if you want the Zoom link, I can email it to you. The other stuff I was going to talk about was I went to Eagle Point meeting. They invited OSBA down and asked questions about what OSBA's stand was on things. It was basically our regional meeting was basically a recap of what happened on that. I have a OSBA boards and directors meeting on November 12th and 13th. We'll be talking about goals and priorities and just kind of how to help support all the districts and all the, because it's so diverse now and there's a lot. So we're really getting in depth on places. So if you will have any suggestions, but I've been listening to several districts and and I I think OSBA is moving in the right direction. It's really hard with such a diverse amount of people. Emily from Eagle Point is getting together board chairs and their vice chairs. The date is not confirmed yet. It was the 16th, but then she asked about the 15th. And then next week also is the board chair cafe, which this is our second meeting that they've done via Zoom and it was very good. So I hope to attend that. So if you have any, I will be busy next week, but please contact me if you have any questions and I'll give you a recap on that.
Question about the, and this could be for you or for Sarah or maybe Brent, but the tell me about the authority of this vaccine advisory committee. How does that all work? I'm assuming they make, they review vaccines and then make recommendations to, is it the governor or is it the, is it ODE? How does that process work?
Bringing it back up. I believe it's part of oh, oh, DHS and O A, O H A. So those two. And from what and from what Jim said is there's they've, he's been on the committee for 20 years and they've done past one vaccine. So there's doctors on there. There's school representation. There's parents. There's religious groups. There's a whole bunch of and they talk about the vaccine and it's a whole long process. They have public input. Jim had talked about too, one of the things he wanted to see as OSBA is making sure that when it, if it did pass that that there was time for for community input. And that it was, there was clear communication to the parents of the choices that they had still. And really wanted it to not be a fast process to to go through the hoops that every vaccines had to go through since whenever this committee was started. Do you want to add anything, Sarah?
So when this committee considers a vaccine, you're talking about them passing something. What are they passing and who? What authority do they have and who does that go to? In other words, if they say we're passing that this particular vaccine, polio vaccine is, we recommend students are receive this vaccine in order to attend school. Who does that go to in terms of? How does that work in terms of authority?
It's kind of like a subcommittee that kind of works for OHA and DHS. So then it goes to the to OHA DHS and it doesn't go up to the governor? I don't know. That's a good question that we can, I can ask Richard Donovan or you can email him as well. But it wasn't clear on that. And I have only read a little bit of information. I haven't read. They do, if you go to their website and I can give it to you, they have like a 30 page document on what the group does. It's probably in there, but honestly, I got to page seven.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I'm just curious what authority they have and how that all works, considering that could be something we are dealing with at some point. So, okay.
I think as this process moves forward, I think it'll be very clear and we'll, just like with FEMA and emergency housing and transitional housing, we will we'll know exactly how that process works. And we'll try to get some information and we'll reach out to see if we can get some clarity on that as well for next meeting.
That'd be great. I think, you know, one of the things that we've all realized through this process of the pandemic and everything is authority we have and authority we don't have. And so I think if there's going to be something eventually, whether it's a year from now, two years from now, that comes down to the pike, it's helpful to understand where we do have control as a local school board and where we don't and how we might bring along the community through that process of and learn together about what the various levels of authority are and work together for what our community wishes to see rather than, you know, create a situation where there's an adversarial type of thing going on. So that's why I ask and you know, yeah, again, learning on the fly is the theme of the last two years, certainly, but I appreciate the information.
And I think that's well said. That was what I was thinking too. So the public would also know that what is what they can because sometimes they think they can talk to us, but if they come with us to these meetings as well, then it's a larger voice. So that's perfect. And I will get some more. I might get more information when I'm at the board of directors meeting as well. And then I do have a PACE meeting coming up as well. So I probably will have more, but if Brent wants to look into some and we, I can contact Richard Donovan as well. He gets back really quick.
That's, um, he works for OSBA. He's a lawyer.
Yeah, he's a lawyer lobbyist person who is just amazing. I went to Washington DC with them and anytime I've had a question with them, he like he'll spend an hour if you need to. He really wants to make sure you're understanding every single thing.
That's good. He doesn't bill by the tenth of the hour either.
I don't know. It comes and it's, he's included in our package. So I have no idea. Any other questions about Paul legislation and OSBA? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to the Almeida fire update.
Yeah, I think we covered it with the gateway. That's the exciting news. And over the next month or two, it'll be nice to see families in that those trailers and that community starting to build.
Yeah, you know, the only thing I would add in an update is I think it's important perspective wise that we all understand that we are in, I had a chat with Mayor Darby the other day and we're, we're at halftime in a full process, right? And and the end goal is permanent housing for our families. And so there's going to be you know, hiccups and and things that are still in flux that have to be worked out, such as families and benefits they receive and transitioning from emergency housing to transitional housing to hopefully affordable, permanent housing. And I think it's just important perspective for us to keep. While also operating with a sense of urgency that we still have families living in a very emergency transitional type of state and that requires, you know, the urgency of all leaders working together in the same direction. And I just have to commend this community. I don't know if you, those of you who are at the gateway ribbon cutting know this, but the state of Oregon has been awarded a significant amount of money towards recovery efforts and honestly, this, what's that? Yeah, the largest ever awarded for something of this state, I think almost half a billion dollars.
422 million. I just looked it up because I remember that.
Just unprecedented. And it's an unprecedented disaster, right? But I think one of the reasons that happened is because of the effort of our local leaders and the community, this community working together. And so yeah, there's going to be hiccups and fits and starts and it's slower than we would like, but I'm really proud of this community and everything that they've accomplished working together to have these, these kind of measures happen. And so yeah, just an important perspective as we continue to move forward and for our families to know that we were here for them and we're continuing to work hard for them. So.
Thank you very much. That was a great report. Any questions? Okay, hearing none, we will go to the diversity, equity and inclusion.
I can bring this up if you want. I got accused of not saying anything, so I'll say something. So I volunteered to be on the board of the the EI committee for the school district. And so Nancy and I are going to be serving on there with staff and from the schools. Yesterday we had that meeting and it was pretty fantastic. It's kind of like we're starting from scratch and getting a program together. And there's two co facilitators who are pretty magical and that would be Carrie Brooks and Carmen Edwards Henry. And there are some great ideas that these two have come up with and and also ones that Brett mentioned from the past that I'm pretty excited to see what this is going to turn into for our district. So.
And I'm just grateful that there's two folks doing this because that work is it's it's so dynamic. It's so complex and it requires a lot of energy and time and resources. So I'm really grateful for the folks who are choosing to participate in this committee because it really, this equity work really is a responsibility of all of us. And how do we start to speak the same language so we can be responsive to the very specific needs of our individual kiddos and families that we get to serve. So that that's super, super excited.
I want to say that I was reminded in that meeting of why I came to be in this group. We all shared something personal about ourselves and after myself, people talked about their own children, which I neglected to do. And then Skoshi held up a picture of my daughter, her graduation announcement, and that's been since 2020. And I'm just so grateful for this district that we live in. And that just reminded me of why I'm here. So I was grateful for that.
Thank you very much. Do we need to add anything else, Brent, or anything else that's going on on the admin side?
No, just thankful for the participation and the representative, representation from the board. And yeah, really excited. I think you know, just cautioning really to focus on a couple of things because I think it can get really macro. But I reminded the group that really we focused on a couple of things last year. But if you saw a list that I shared at the beginning of the year, five, six, seven incredible things happened. So some of just what happens organically. So really kind of narrowing the focus and then things, more things come out of that. So really excited for Carrie and Carmen to help lead that work and 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 you're right, it's a responsibility for all of us. So it doesn't just lie on one person or two people. It's it's all of our jobs. So.
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate Polly stepping in and taking over for me. I just felt like I needed to concentrate on other things, but I will be keeping you updated on any legislation that is DEI related.
That's the beauty of it, that not everybody has to be everywhere, but if we if we can leverage our strengths or or our interests amongst the various opportunities. I think that that is what makes a strong board because we don't want anyone to be super exhausted because they're everywhere to or they're everything to everyone. So I I love that we can share the responsibilities.
Me too. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to the student investment account. Tiffany gets to enlighten us tonight.
Okay, so I talked about the student investment account last summer, but didn't open it up for board comment. And so just to briefly talk about last year's student investment account. If you remember from the presentation last summer, we had four priorities and we got community input and the number one priority from our community, which included our staff, our families, community members, students themselves was health and safety was number one with a specific interest in mental health. And the second one was increasing our staff to student ratio or reducing class size. So last year we used all of our funds. We spent every penny. Most of it was on that La Clinica contract, which provided a mental health provider at the elementary schools, ATI and the middle school. And then we also got a provider from Family Solutions who had been working at the high school. She stayed at the high school, Quinn, there. We're continuing that this year, but we just added last week, La Clinica added two telehealth therapists due to our needs. So they're serving our students at the Rising Academy. They're also serving our students in our Compass Alternative Ed Program. And they're also providing some service for students that are in quarantine because that does have some mental health effects. And then overflow because our therapists at every school filled up very quickly. And thank goodness we had La Clinica in last year. We couldn't have predicted the fire, but we're very grateful for them. Last year, we also paid for our virtual academy teachers that reduce some of the class sizes in person. This year, we're continuing with the Rising Academy and paying for the aid with the student investment account. And also our SRO contract for Town Middle School is through student investment account. We were doing all that this year. I told you about the add-ons with La Clinica. We also hired our instructional assistants for kindergarten and first grade classrooms. We had budgeted for 16 and I think we're about 13 that we were able to hire. We're also added just a minimal time, but for a counselor that through the Southern Oregon ESD that can use American Sign Language for our students that participate in the deaf and hard of hearing program. And bilingual aides at the middle school. And we're using SIA to fund the elementary music program, which we are expected to start in December. Oh, it's through, it's a contract through Rogue World Music. We were unable to find a teacher for the elementary, but. a nice solution with, with a partnering agency, which I think will be great. And then we did have on SIA for a school psychologist. We do have a school psych intern, which I hope he stays with us forever and ever. But we instead switched it to a speech and language pathologist because they can do a lot of the testing and assessments. And so that's a SLP for the Rising Academy and the middle school. So with that, I opened it up to ask if anybody has any questions. I brought my computer in case anybody from the public or administrators have questions as well.
Okay, we'll let the board ask questions first.
Does that spend all our money, every last penny again this year? Or do we still have money?
We'll just have a slight buffer with SRO contract and how many aides we are able to hire. But this last summer, we, we were able to get an extension to pay for anything that happened over summer school. So we'll likely need to use that again if we have summer activities.
Is this a line item income in our budget or in our financial report? I mean, how much money are we talking about?
This year is allocation of 1.8 million and of that about just over 50,000 goes to Armadillo Tech. So it's a pretty good line item. And it does receive a separate audit that you'll see in the auditors report this year.
So this is that construction excise tax, not construction excise tax. This is the corporate business tax, right? From the student success. Okay.
You got it.
So one side calls it one thing. We call it student investment, right?
Yeah, there's a whole Student Success Act that encompasses all pre-K and a lot of different organizations, healthcare, and then the, the K-12 portion is a student investment account, which is, which is our portion of that.
And we have more activities this year because last year we were funded just under eighty percent of, for SIA. And this year we've received full funding.
I just had a comment. It's pretty impressive, all the things that you have been doing and it's always mind blowing. Can you hear me? Oh, it's always mind blowing how much the school step in to support families. And I think that that's really the beauty of the success of school systems, but specifically to this school district. I loved how Kent mentioned that there's this classroom that six, that supports sixty-five students in the middle school, which means it's increased education, it's less disruption. So I love that you're looking at the school part of, of a kiddo's life, but also ensuring that you don't just stop there, but you're really enhancing it with all these additional supports that make such a huge difference. It really does support a student to be, and a student and a family to be more successful. So thank you, thank you, thank you. I'm always so humbled by all the things that school districts do.
And I have to give a huge shout out to our student investment account team. It's a, it's a great team of teachers, aides, board members, administrators and community members. It's it's really great that they really do listen to the input from our stakeholders before making any decisions.
My question is around the onsite mental health supports. So walk us through in practicality, how that works. If I'm a student and I'm experiencing something that requires mental health support, how do they access that during the day, during the school?
It's a good question. So our mental health providers are on campus now full time. There, we, we have counselors at the middle school and the high school. We have school psychologists and other supports. But the mental health providers on campus are for those who need ongoing therapeutic services. So most of the time that's weekly therapy. Now, if a student had to leave campus to go see their, their therapist, that's a lot of time missed from school. So it's convenient, great access to have it right on school ground. So that could come from a student referring themselves. And of course, then we get parent permission. It could be a parent calling for referral, but most of the time it comes from a school referral. So we see a student that needs extra support. The paperwork goes home to the parent. Sometimes the school might have a meeting and have the paperwork signed there to give that consent. So our agreement with La Clinica is we serve, they serve all students and regardless of what type of insurance they have. So if they do have Oregon Health Plan, La Clinica is billing that. If they have private insurance or no insurance, that's what we're paying into. So the hope with La Clinica that was after two years of us paying the expenses, they would have enough service developed that I think it will cost us about forty-five thousand a year to offset the cost between Oregon Health Plan and the other insurance. So it's no cost to the families.
Wonderful. Compared to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. So that, that's a drastic, that could go into other investments that the SIA team will, will be deciding on. So that's, it's a tremendous partnership.
And I'll add that, that four hundred and fifty is more than just the therapist too. We have nursing services onsite for two days a week. We have these many school-based health centers at our elementary schools and, and middle schools. So there's a provider that rotates through. So that could be, you know, strep tests, they, they gave some flu shots. It's really providing access for our families without missing a lot of school time. They, they do do referrals for dental, but we don't provide onsite dental care. But they do do our screenings and our floorings.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions for Tiffany?
I have a quick question. Is there someone from our board that sits on the board that she mentioned? You are, okay.
I was on that board. I was the vice chair, living, you know, relaxing. And I was on two committees. Living the dream, Michael said right now. I was on two committees and that one was actually one of, I've been on tons of committees and they've all been very helpful, but this one was probably one of the most helpful committees I've ever been on in my life, just because of the, the staff and everybody was so thoughtful of how to get input from families throughout the district. And it was evident in the pages after pages of comments and that they felt comfortable with our districts saying what they felt. And the information we got, it, as a board member, it really, really helped me kind of have a path on which ways to go and, and like, okay, we are making good decisions or we need to change it. It was, it's a really, really helpful committee. So right now we don't meet as much because a lot of the groundwork has been done, but.
Oh, we're going to meet again. Heather's team at Towns Elementary is helping to develop the survey, engagement survey, which will be the, the first part of our engagement and we'll start our listening sessions. And then with parents and different subgroups and then our student listening session. So those little strips of paper with the comments, they're, they're coming back. Last year we were virtual, so we just had virtual meetings. So less of a turnout, more of a focus group. But we'll, we'll ramp that up. So we'll appreciate your help again this year.
And is there room for another board member if they choose that we can have? Or is this committee already solid and you don't want anymore?
Oh no, there's always room for another board member and other volunteers. And I'm looking at the principals virtually.
I'm happy to volunteer to be on that committee.
Thank you, Nancy. And for ESAR, we also need, the committee will combine our SIA and ESAR actions. ESAR is the same subgroups that we look at input for, except we also add on migrant, which we had already done and incarcerated youth.
Any questions from staff online? And then I don't know if we have any public, but this one time only, I don't know if only, but very opportu, we are letting the public ask questions about SIA to Tiffany. If you have any, just put your, put it in the chat, please.
It's all on our website if people want to review the annual plan.
Okay, I don't see any other questions for you. Thank you so much Tiffany for all your work on this. This has been such a great project. Next to the OSBA board policy rewrite and then an add-on, as you saw on the email today. Denise, first of all, I want to say I put this on the agenda or Brett and I put this on the agenda, just to remind you that we have that big packet of, of policies to look through that we're going to be looking at in December. So you have a while, but just kind of a reminder that it's still there. Because if you're like me, you'll think of it like two days before and that's not going to be enough time. So this kind of reminder to myself. And then we are putting up, OSBA sent an email out that we need to review policy ACB and ACB AR and have it approved by January. So we will have to bring this up for vote in our December meeting. So I apologize. Usually we get to read them a little bit before information and discussion. I mean, so we can discuss it more, but we will, I will let it also be on the, we can discuss if something pops up or you can always ask Denise or Brent prior to the meeting. But does anyone want to discuss policy ACB or the AR?
I just, I had an opportunity to look over it really quick before the meeting tonight and I still just struggle with the second sentence, which is part of the equity policy from the district and I'm, I just struggle with the word feels in the sentence. We believe in and are committed to creating an inclusive culture where every student, staff member and family feels seen, heard and validated in their existence. And I, I just struggle with the word feels because I think we can put every effort best forward and not get to the feel part because that's just a magic bullet that, and so I'm a little concerned about is the district policy. So, but I just wanted to maybe suggest or bring up if that sentence was maybe moved out of this paragraph, does it change enough for anyone to really show the scope of where our of what we need in this policy for the district?
In full transparency, I haven't looked at it. But I, I would not like to, I would not like to remove something because I think that there's a lot of value in what that says. I would love the idea of possibly utilizing a different word that's still I, I, while I, while I do agree with you that we can't make anybody feel anything, I, I'd love to keep some of that wording, but maybe change that piece where we don't lose, like, I don't want to throw everything out for the sake of one word. But how do we restructure it in a way that it's really going to be reflective of what we want to do?
And I, I think this came directly verbatim from the policy for the district. So I think it might, if we were to maybe have that conversation at a, at a DEI committee meeting, I feel like it should probably be changed in there to come over because this, this was insert your equity statement for your district in here. So I feel like potentially changing it in here without first having the conversation with the equity policy wouldn't be prudent. And since it's such a short time span, I don't know that there's time to meet with. This is just what I'm, I'm not, you know, so versus taking it out because it's still a district policy. It just isn't in our statement for this. And then if there is potential to have that rewritten, I think we could re-adopt and add a restructured sentence if that was the direction of the DEI committee to go with changing that word.
Thank you very much. Did you have a comment, Brent?
No, I think that process would work well. And then once we approach the DEI committee and, and share this option to review it and then recommend to the board what they feel. So.
And I know the, I was sitting on the DEI committee when that was going through and they, and they did do a lot of work, but this was the very first, I mean, the district itself, we don't write policy very often and we did have help of OSBA, but it's one of our first shots. And as we have learned in the last two years that you try to put your best foot forward and then you learn and you move and you improve. And so I do think it's something going back to DEI and I would be comfortable taking part of it out since it's in the original DEI statement and letting them decide if they would like to change that or not. Because times have changed a lot since this has passed, even though it's only been a year, it seems like it's been ten years. To me, yeah.
So just to sort of synthesize this issue in my own brain for a second. What's happened is the legislature passed a law saying that every school district has to pass this policy, basically, correct? And, and we, as a school district, chose to adopt an equity policy in addition to this policy. And so it, do I have that right?
Sort of.
This is for that House bill that essentially replaces these policies in this AR. We have a, a equity policy that has this language in there. And then in this policy, it says, insert your equity statement as, as Sarah mentioned. And so that's, that's how it, you do not have to insert your equity statement in this. It's not a requirement. It is an option. So.
Do we have an equity statement somewhere else? I want to say we do, but I could be wrong. Like, do we have, I thought we had equity statement on the, sorry for putting this out last minute and we can look at it.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have language in our guiding principles. We have language in our strategic plan. So we have, we have equity statements in a variety of areas on our, on our documents.
Yeah, I was just making a suggestion. We could use one of those other equity statements as well.
I think most of our equity statements come direct from the policy that the district has adopted and it's similar. It's, it's this language because this is the district policy. So this is the language and I, that's, that's just my word I struggle with.
So I don't have JBB in front of me, but that language is in JBB as well. It feels seen and heard. Yeah, correct. So, yeah, okay. So, I mean, the only thing I'll say is I think it's important that our policies don't contradict each other. So I, I'm not saying that's what the outcome of this would be, but that's the only thing I'm, want to ensure doesn't happen is that our policies contradict each other and are consistent. And our stance on equity is consistent throughout related policies.
I would agree. I just wondered what people thought about if it changed the tone of the paragraph without that sentence? If, if that was a deal breaker or if that was really, if you felt like that was, if the message of equity came across without that sentence?
First of all, I appreciate you bringing this up today. While we have time to talk about it and that's, I think, the cadence that we should establish as a board as we're looking at policies is giving ourselves ample time to look at the language and talk about it. You know, at least a meeting before, you know, we have to, we have to take action on it. But from what I understand, just putting everything together. Yeah, I don't necessarily know that it would take away because we do have our equity policy, which has that language there. So. As long as we're sending the message that we're creating a, our desire is to have a school district where every child belongs. I don't have a problem with it. But so happy to hear what with, happy to see what we come up with for the next meeting and take action at that point.
So do we, are we at a agreement on moving forward, or do we want a couple of samples for next time? Or what, what, how would you like to move forward? I'm just making sure that we're.
I think what Michael suggested is good. I mean, this came, so we have a couple of, we have a month before we're voting on this because the job meeting won't be make, you know, taking any action. So there's a month to think about this or look at this and really in depth and see how everyone feels about it. And we won't take action on it until the December meeting.
And just so I'm clear, I heard three different things. We could keep it as is, same language, and then have DEI review the language in both policies to see if we want to change both policies later on. We can leave this language out completely. It's not required in this. Every student belongs. We can leave that first paragraph out, or we can modify this paragraph. First paragraph. Did I hear that correctly?
Yeah. So I think this does fall under the purview of the DEI committee probably. And so if that's, you know, fortunately, we don't have the luxury of having a committee for every policy that we, that comes before us, but this certainly falls under that purview. So I would say with any policy, just thinking of big picture, when we go to take action on it, any board member could make a motion of, of either passing the policy as presented or suggesting changes to that policy, and then we can handle it through the, through the, you know, our normal Robert's Rules of Order, you know, practice of taking action. You know, just not, I'm not trying to play devil's advocate, but I, you know, I suppose one could say if we have the language in another policy, does it matter whether it's in this policy or not, if it's, if it exists in, in our equity policy? So it's sort of, does it matter that it's there? It's sort of on the same plane of, does it matter that it's not there if it already exists in another policy that we follow? So those are my thoughts, but I think just any policy that comes before us, any board member can make a motion of how they want to see the policy read, and we can take it from there. But I, I just want to say, tell you, Sarah, that I appreciate you bringing this up now for rich discussion about it and because I think that's helpful. So Brent, to answer your question, I think it's, if there's a DEI meeting between now and the next board meeting, have them review it and present something to the board. Present language to the board that we can take action on. That's what I would recommend.
That's what I would highly recommend as well. I think that's great. Is that realistic? Because this took almost a year to write.
And, and when you're talking, and I, I agree. Thank you, Sarah, because when you're talking this, this is just not potentially one meeting with the DEI committee. This is, you know, deliberations and really kind of being thoughtful and intentional about that. So I certainly think it could happen over the course of, you know, the year. But to have this, a strong recommendation with two new co-facilitators that we want to keep around might, might be tough to, to get. So that's just my suggestion.
And when we were doing this last year, we were meeting twice a month and working on this. And now I believe the DEI policy is meeting once a month. And so another thing that I like to bring up as well is for now, everybody here in this room knows that there's two policies and the words, but 10 years, if something happens, and I hope not, because we're going to keep up on our policies. But if something happens where we're at now, and we have 20, 25-year-old policies, and we aren't aware, if everybody in this room decides to just leave forever, then we, we would have problems again. And so I kind of, for me, having the same language and not even saying this is coming from that other policy could cause issues in the future. That's one of my concerns, because it doesn't even say this is from the other policy. So someone 20 years from now might not realize it. Well, legislation changes so often, and equity is a high piece in legislation. And the all stu-, the all students belong was brand new a year ago, and now they've changed a new policy this year. I would imagine they're probably going to have a new policy every year to two years. And so just, you know, are they going to bring in that language every time, or are they going to change? Or I, yeah, you know, policy. It's crazy. So that was my only.
I think that since one of the options is to pass this policy without this language in here, and because of the timing of when this policy needs to be updated, I guess I'll just make this recommendation that maybe we not have that, since it is a district policy, it potentially gives DEI committee an opportunity to look at that. And maybe it, maybe it stays the same, maybe it doesn't. But this policy stands on its own with what the district says without that language in it. So I guess that would be my for sake of time recommendation.
So, yeah, I, I thank you, and I appreciate that. So I think, so the reason I keep talking about this is because I think there's some precedent that we're setting here. Because we're doing this big rewrite for how we handle policy, passing policies and making changes to language and things like that. So I, I suppose the trouble for me is absent taking official action on it as a board, there's not really, it's been presented to us in this, in this rough draft form. And unless we're going to make a motion to take action to change the rough draft, I'm just unsure of how we do that at this point in the process. And so I think this is an important thing for us to figure out as a board, because if that's what you would like to recommend, Sarah, I would think that would happen when this policy is up for action. Does that make sense?
In the past, can I jump? Oh, I would have to disagree with that. So in the past, that's sorry.
Because she said yes, and you're like, I'm disagreeing. No, that's not what I'm.
Sorry. So in the past, we've had information and discussion, and Rick can help me because he's been on way more board meetings than me. But in the past, we've had information discussion. And if a board, when this comes up, and the board's kind of leaning towards changing it, then we change it. So we have a final draft to look at. And if we decide again not to do that, then they can, like you said, a board member can do a motion for anything, but it kind of, for some people are visual people. So to have it written on the way the board's kind of leaning and see that, or sometimes, and I hate to give Denise too much work, sometimes there's two, we have like option one and option two, and then we can read them both and then pick one or two, and hopefully deleting a paragraph is not going to be too much, I hope, Denise.
So I will say, so twofold for me. One, I, I, I don't have a problem with this language. I don't have a problem with the paragraph being in there. So my concern is if it's removed without any official action from the board, now I'm going to have to remember this paragraph so that when I make my motion, it's going to be to pass the policy with this paragraph in it versus just, it's already there. If Sarah would like to make a motion to pass the policy without the paragraph, she can do that. And then we're just deleting it rather than me having to go
and add it.
and add this, an entire paragraph that I think is fine. It's already a paragraph we have in, in another policy. So I don't see a problem personally with that. No disrespect to your opinion, but so when you said the board's leaning, that's where I'm, that's where I'm having trouble is how do we know where the board is leaning unless there's a vote that's taken and there's action taken? You know what I mean? So, and not to be a stickler about it, but I think these sort of things are important as when you're a board and you're setting precedent for how the board will operate. I always try to think about, well, how is the board going to operate when I'm not here, you know? And so, and we have a lot of policies to come before us. And so I'm, I'm just, again, really thankful you brought this up because it's not just about this policy. It's about how we address every policy that's going to come before us in the, in the next few months. And the way it seems like it happens now, a staff puts the language together, it comes from OSBA, it sounds like administrators weigh in with their language, it's presented to the board, and then at that point, we can, this, we can review it the meeting, meeting prior. And we can certainly discuss it. And the reason this is helpful is it helps us sort of formulate our opinions and where we think the policy should go. And then I just, I'm having trouble, I'm getting stuck on, there's no, you can make a motion right now, I suppose, but.
She couldn't because it's information.
Okay. And so you'd have to spend the rules and do all that, right? So that's where I get into trouble is just making sure that it's really clear. So that's, there's a clear, I don't want to call it chain of evidence, but you know, there's a clear chain of, something's presented to us in a draft form also, so it's clear to the public, right? So you know, oh, well, this, this paragraph was in here, the meeting prior, and now it's suddenly gone, but the board didn't take any official action on that. I may be getting spun out for nothing, but I just think it's important that there's that clear. The board took action on it, and that's why it's changed. So I don't know. Anybody else want to weigh in here? Because I know this is taking time. We all want to go home, but we're about to be faced with hundreds of policies that we're going to be looking at. So I think it's important to figure this out now.
I think it's good to have procedural, good conversations. What if we put like Denise typically puts for us, the brackets for optional language? So that then next week, next board meeting, we know that it's in there as air quote, optional language. We've seen it. We've had the opportunity. Then when someone makes the motion, we can, whoever moves, whoever seconds, it's, it's there. It's there because it, it is optional language for passing this policy, right?
I'll share with you what it says. Insert the district statement on equity if applicable. That's exactly what it says.
Is that from the statute, or is that from OSBA's? That's the statute.
That's from the OSBA, on House Bill 2697.
And the other reason this is important, and I like where you're headed with this, because you're not going to go through and put color coding or optional language in all of these rewrites that we're doing. So, but if we, but if we identify ahead of time in the information and discussion, something, again, I still struggle with it because I don't know how we take action to do that. But I suppose that could be something to figure out. I don't know.
So what I'm hearing is for this policy, we will have it as optional, and the person who passes the motion can either do it with the optional language or without, which I like. That's kind of where my head was going, but my mouth was not saying that. So I love that idea, Sarah. And then Michael, you were wanting to know procedure-wise, and that's before in the information and discussion, we have changed things and then voted on it later. But I'm, but we can ask how we want to do it. Either way, it's fine with me. Denise, did you have some? Yes. Please speak. That's what we've done in the past. Okay. And that's how we've done it in the past. But then in this situation, it looks like we really wouldn't know what everybody wants because we'd have to take it to a vote, and some people might vote no and yes. So that's why typically in that, it's a small little, you know, sentence or two ad, and everyone's like, oh, yeah, they had nod, and they change it, and we move on. This is a little bit more detailed and involves other committees and lots of work and all of that. So it's, I, I really liked your question, but I don't think it's a typical, we're going to see it typically all the time.
Yeah. So just, so if there's a typo, or there is, you know, something that's just doesn't make sense, I think it makes sense to make nominal changes. But when you're talking about removing entire paragraphs that fundamentally could reshape the structure of the policy and message of the policy, that's where I'm struggling, not with doing that, because if you make a motion and there's a second, and the board votes to adopt the policy as is presented in a motion, then that's, that's the way the board works, right? But I just, I'm struggling with the, I'm struggling with that because I think there's, there's different edits that can be made to policies that can change the policies in certain ways. So.
Are you struggling with? I feel like, I don't know, but everybody else, I can let everybody else, someone else talk, but I feel like the option of the way we've decided will work great moving forward, but I'm open to more discussion and what everybody else thinks.
What have we decided? The way we decided, how did we decide?
That we had optional language. This is optional language.
Okay.
And we're going to treat it like every other policy that has optional language like we have in the past. We just got this at such a short notice. There wasn't a chance to do optional language in it. I think there was an email that Denise wrote that was very had a lot of information in it. But again, some of us are visual, and so it didn't maybe click that that was optional. But in the past, and if Denise would have had more time, I guarantee you it would have been optional, and it would have been a tad less confusing.
So normally that would have been the case, Denise. If you give it, you got this email yesterday at 9:40, so you didn't have exactly a lot of time to that, yeah. So, so if it had been last week you got this, you probably would have color coded it before it came to us, or that's what I'm just trying to understand, because we're, how many policies are getting ready to pass?
So, and I agree, and I'll just say, this, this is when it says, insert equity statement if applicable. That was the equity statement we've had on our equity policy. And so we just pushed it into that, that, which is applicable, is what we felt. So whether the board wants to consider that optional, we can certainly discuss that. So that's, that's how that process worked.
Right. That's true. Correct. Yeah, that makes sense. And I think Brent just made a really good point there. Is it really optional? I would argue probably not, because we do have an equity statement, and it is applicable. So that's what I mean about taking action, right? So I'm really not trying to be a jerk here. I'm just trying to figure out how we're going to proceed with this policy and policies going forward, and we're all on the same page.
Michael, I do appreciate the questions because you're asking a lot of the questions that are on my mind, even though there's a lot of conversation here, but also procedurally, it, for me, I can't speak for anybody else. For me, it's really important to have that clarity on how that works. And it does feel somewhat incongruent with a process, like we just take it out. And I don't know when are the right times to take something out, or when it's not the right time to take something out. So for me, this conversation, it's really valuable because I'm trying to keep up. And I'm, I'm right where you are, Michael, trying to figure out these pieces. And there was something else that I was going to say. Um, and also just that historical context, right? Like you all know how long it took you to write that. I have no idea. I have no context. So although we're struggling through this, I feel like we're birthing something or laboring something. I'm really hoping that, that the end result is, is something that is going to be positive, but also like a really great learning opportunity, as I don't understand how long it takes, you know, how long the process is, as I'm still quite new. Um, so thank you for asking all the questions. Don't feel like a jerk, because I also have those questions, and I'm not sure about everybody else. And I'd love to hear other people because I think it's really valuable, not calling anybody out. But to have more discussion besides people who feel really comfortable speaking up.
I, I, I wanted to say, is, is the, is the questions you have about that, is it just that one word feels? That's it? Okay.
This is an inactable policy. We've got real direction. We've got an AR that goes along with it, and we can't control how someone feels. We can try our very best. That goes along with it. And we can't control how someone feels. We can try our very best to do that. And I struggled with this in the equity policy. And so when we're. Adding another policy that then you as a district are trying to enforce, I don't know that we can enforce. How someone feels. So that's my struggle. Which is why. Really. To capture the spirit of the equity policy, get an opportunity, maybe have a further conversation was to just take out. That one sentence so that. Still, the equity policy was in there, but I, I don't know how we can enforce feels. And since this is a legal policy that we're trying to, that we have to stand up and say, this is what we did. But that's my struggle.
Okay. In some of this, I feel like there's been a lot of stuff that happened before I arrived on the scene. So thank you for being more clear about what. It was, because I kind of felt like I was, like, I felt like I was in the middle of the movie and I missed like the whole stuff before that. No, it's not your fault. Yeah.
Those things are going to happen. I think. Those things are going to happen. Just be prepared that that's going to continue to happen for years and years and years. Cause it still happens for me. But. I think. I, you know. And just procedurally, you know, if. It kind of seems like to me, if you have a problem with the language in the equity policy, then. You could always make a mo, you could always bring that policy forward for consideration of the board to revise too. And. I just, I don't, I struggle with those two being incongruent. So. And, and I, and again, I, I'm really big on precedent, right? So I think it's important that we are consistent with. Policy, because policies will refer to each other, you know, and. That's something for the board to strongly consider. How do we want to handle policies that. Refer or borrow language from each other so that there's consistency and congruency there. So it's, it's important. It's important consideration.
So I struggled with this language when we brought this policy. So this felt like the next opportunity with a new committee now meeting. To set goals for the next year to bring up that. Again.
Anybody else want to add any, anybody else want to add any comments or discussion?
I guess I should step in here at some point. This whole discussion is dealing with this first paragraph, correct? Is this something we could settle tonight? I mean, does the board feel? I don't have a problem with this paragraph. Sarah does, but I'm just wondering what the rest of the board feels.
I tend to agree with Michael. That if it's already language that's in another policy, what would be our. What would be our options in? In changing the language in both policies, if, if we were going to change it in one, we would have to, I feel like we would have to change it in the other.
And I agree with that completely, which is why I'd like to see the DEI committee relook at this language so that there. And I don't know if that happens on the backend, right? Like if we pass this with this, is this something that?
So I think.
Then it could still be a conversation.
Yeah, I think, so one thing that we're faced with right now is House Bill 2697 takes effect January 1st. So I think we have to adopt this policy before that time, at least initially. I might suggest we. We take action on it at the next meeting as planned. And then if we want to bring, bring both policies back up for consideration of the DEI committee and then. Bring back to the board for a possible amendment, that might be something we can do. Just because we do have to adopt this policy by statute before January 1st. So just a thought for, that might, you know, alleviate. I think. Yet we have, the DEI whole process has changed a lot, or you know, it's, we got new, new facilitators, new members. And so. It makes sense, right? That, that. We would take another look at policies related to DEI and consider those. It's just that we're under this time constraint for this particular policy right now. So just a thought.
That seems to make more sense rather than changing this and then trying to catch up on the backend. It makes sense to continue it. As it is, and then have the flexibility and the time that will work to change it, to feel, to, to create something that feels. More reflective of what we want to do. And I'm so grateful for you that you, you know, that this is something that is. Difficult and you're like speaking to it. So.
Yeah. And just to be clear, Sarah, you could always make a motion that contradicts everything I just said at the next meeting that we would have to consider, right? So I think that's, and I think that's important too, for our new board members. To, you know, understand the, the process of how, how the governance works and how we pass things and. What your role as an individual board member can be in passing policy, because it's one of the main pillars of our responsibilities.
I would just like to add that I think those are all great ideas. And since we're going to have a ton of policies coming to us. It might be something and would give the DEI committee time is if we kind of put this. On a calendar or tabled or something. So we didn't forget, because we don't want to forget. Hand it over to DEI, but let them know like, hey, we have 400 and what is it? 50 policies coming. And so you have plenty of time to work on this. And then when that's done. We can then look at this policy and there might be some others that we need to do the same with as well, that we'll have to pass. Or we feel like we need to pass. And then we'll have, we can maybe make a list of revisiting. Policies. Cause I have a feeling this might be not the only policy we want to revisit. Denise is shaking her head. So that means, sounds good. So do we need to discuss this any further? No, we would like the policy the same way. And then if someone wants to delete something, then they can delete it in a motion. Is that correct? Is that what I heard?
That's what I'd like to said as just sort of our process. Yeah.
Nope, you can leave it as is. We're making your night a little tad easier.
Absent the 30-minute discussion we just had, we were ahead of schedule. My apologies.
No, I think this.
No, it is important. Yeah. Well, they love long days, upon long days, upon long days.
Okay. So we're moving on to the jab meeting logistics.
Yeah. And no, no apologies necessary. We, that's a good discussion and we will, you know, follow that process, which I think is good. So the logistics of jab meeting, November 18th will be here. We will plan on having some sort of a meal out, just right outside here in these nice. Upstairs commons area at 5:30 and we'll share a meal and chat. And then we will actually officially start. Our program at six. Just a little bit of a change. We do, the elementaries are going to do a combined, a little longer presentation, but there's so many similarities. That we're going to combine that. Then we will have the middle school and the high school and then get a chance to hear from PTRA and ATI, which is great. So. Really looking forward to sharing everything that's going on in the schools and kind of the focus for this year and some goals. So. It's always a great time to, to learn more. And this is a very engaged board. So you know a lot of things already. But there's always some nuggets that you can take from the jab meeting. So looking forward to that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for that, on that?
And it will be a similar, it will be virtual, but we will have our administrative team here, but for the public, it will. It could be a virtual option. So.
And just to make something clear is that on the draft agenda for that, it says. Presentation and questions, and the questions are only board questions. This is not a. Meeting where the public would be able to ask questions. These are questions. That the board can ask, and that's what we've typically done. For those that haven't been to a jab meeting, which I think is over half the board. We, that they typically do a presentation and then we have questions and then do the next presentation and have questions. And sometimes. Once in a while, we may circle back and go, oh wait, I just thought of another question. But I just wanted to make that clear that the public is welcome to view it, but that we will not be taking public questions.
Now, this is the first time we were including the public.
Well, we have included the public before, Rick. It's a public meeting. We've had to advise it in public. But and, and it's always been able for a public meeting, because we put it in the, I believe we've done a public notice and put in the paper like we're supposed to. But no public has ever shown up in the past. But from what I under.
Invited them in the past.
From what I understand, we have, because this, we have to with the whole board attending. And I talked to OSBA about having it at someone's in the individual house. And there was a lot of logistics into it. And then with COVID and stuff now, it just seemed like. I mean, it had, the house had to be ADA accessible. It had to have so many bathrooms. I mean, my house would have qualified, but. It, then you've got a lot of people in the room and, and the public, it does have to be public notes. In the past, I don't think. We didn't have a lot of public as interested and I'm glad we do have public interested now. And so there might be a chance that public would attend versus. Five years ago, school board meetings, no one talked about, and now they're virtual online. You watch them all the time. What is the exact date and time of this?
Oh, sorry. It's November 18th. And 5:30, we will be starting dinner and have about a half hour and then we will come in here and start our programming.
Okay. Thank you.
At six, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions about the jab? Okay. Hearing none. I says, review the next meeting agenda, which is the jab. It's in your blue packet. And with that, I adjourn the meeting. Thank you very much for staff for staying online for our.
Hey, we're only, just want to point out, we're only eight minutes over the time on the agenda. So.
Well.
If I hadn't called a recess.
Yes. Oh, dang it. And I stuck to eight minutes.